Okay, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Stock and Meeting of January 9, 2023 to order. All members of this board are present. At 6:15 this evening, we did adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, and other acquisition of real property located at 333 Andover Street in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, as a meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town to be determined as detrimental by the chairman. We did adjourn from that executive session for which we shall not return. And at this time, I would kindly ask that we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the treasury warrants. 202, 324, 202, 324, W.I.R.E.S., 24A, 202, 325, 202, 325, W.I.R.E.S., 25A, 202, 326, 202, 326, W.I.R.E.S., 26A, 202, 327, 202, 327, W.I.R.E.S., and 27A. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second discussion?
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We have three sets of meeting minutes to approve. And looking at all of them, all members were present. Does anyone have an objection to me taking them all up together? Or would you like me to take them up individually?
Together.
All together. Okay. The meeting minutes were in our packet. Hopefully, all board members had an opportunity to read them. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 11, 2022, November 28, 2022, and December 12, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
On December 12, page 2, last name. Normally, I wouldn't point out spelling errors, but I want to just correct it.
Sure. So would you like to amend the motion to approve these minutes as presented with the name correction?
Yes, I will.
Okay, motion's been made. And we have a resecond on that.
Second.
Okay. And then any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our appointments. We are running about five minutes behind. We do apologize. It is with Erica Marshon from Code One Barbecue LLC with a reference to a request to obtain a common victular license for the property located at 211 Main Street. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing fine. How are you this evening? So thank you very much for being here. So we are thrilled to have you. You're a new business in town, a Wilmington resident, and now a business owner. So welcome. We are in receipt of the common victular license request. So you submitted the application, provided any of the required insurance information. You also provided a schematic of the business at hand and the setup of your kitchen and seating and egress and all of that. I'm going to turn it over to the town manager, who goes through a process of getting recommendations from various town hall personnel. And then we will give the board an opportunity to ask you any questions. You can certainly make any comments on your behalf, and then we would take a vote. Okay? So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, so this request, once it came in, was provided to the Health Director Shelley Newhouse and the Building Inspector Al Spalding for their review. They both recommend approval based upon the information here. As the board may recall, in the case of a common victular, the grant is to establish that seating can happen, in this particular case, by virtue of the zoning. For these types of establishments, the maximum number of seats is 12, which I believe is the request here. And so both the Health Department and the Building Inspector are fine with this request.
So before I turn it over to board members for questions and comments, I wanted to speak directly to you, Eric, and just because I was able to attend your grand opening and your ribbon-cutting ceremony with the thank you for inviting me on behalf of the board, but also with the Wilmington Tewksbury Chamber of Commerce. And during that time, the Director Nancy Valli had asked some questions of you and your husband in terms of talking about the nature of your business, talking about the hours, talking about your opening and closing, you know, times based on the preparation required to prepare your meat. So I wanted to give you an opportunity. The cameras are rolling, and people are listening at home. We do have a little extra time so that you can share that in terms of your hours of operation, because it's a little bit different than a traditional setting. And I think that that would benefit you as a business to be able to share that philosophy and way of preparing the meat that dictates your hours.
Yes, so as a barbecue company, everything is slow smoked. For example, our brisket and pulled pork takes anywhere from 12 to 14 hours. So that's why we say when we open, we open and we sell out. We sell out. We can't prepare anymore brisket. We don't make it in advance and freeze it and reheat it. We try to have our food be as fresh as possible. Right now, we're working out the hours. We've been selling out awfully fast, so we're trying to catch lunch and dinner crowds. So we are doing it afternoon openings 11:30 on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until we sell out. And then Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we're going to open a little later at 3:00 PM until we sell out. And we're getting a larger smoker. That just didn't come in time for the opening and, you know, delays in shipping and all of that. We have about a week or two. And once that happens, we are going to do the 11:00 AM to close. We're expecting to close around 6:00, maybe 7:00 PM at night.
So just for the benefit of the public, 211 Main Street is over where, you know, the Dollar Tree is and over where Casablanca is. And then also too, in terms of getting information and updates, where is the best location for residents to look to see if you have any announcements or up-to-the-minute reporting of your hours?
Definitely follow us on Facebook. And you can also update the voicemail, so when you call, you can see what time we're opening. And then the website as well, codeonebarbecue.com. And it's Code One Barbecue on Facebook as well. And we're updating that regularly right now until we can maintain the regular hours. We're also looking for help. So my husband's the pit master. He's smoking all night long, and then he's working during the day. So being open for more than a few hours a day would be challenging for him in getting all of that done. So as soon as we get more help, we can definitely be more consistent with those hours.
Great. Thank you. So at this time, I turn it over to any board members for any questions or comments. And I'll start to my right if anyone has anything on this side.
I'm looking forward to going down. I love barbecue. It's one of my favorite meals. I know this may be a little ahead of, but are you thinking of catering?
We do catering already.
Okay.
Yes, actually. That's what we've been in business for a little over a year since September 2021. And we started off as catering. And we thought we'd just be this little small-time caterer and just grew and grew and grew, and now we're here. So we still do catering, and we do all kinds of catering. We have full service, pickup, drop-off.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I also want to welcome you. Thanks for choosing Wilmington and really looking forward to it. Wish you well. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to my left?
I too was at your opening. And I did have a taste. And unfortunately, my mouth is drooling still.
Yeah.
I wish you the best of luck. And hopefully, you'll get your hours squared away so that we can get down there and enjoy your barbecues.
Yes.
Welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you.
Welcome. I've had your food. It's wonderful. I'm thrilled that you have a brick and mortar now that we can get. And, you know, we need a good barbecue place around here.
Definitely.
So we're thrilled. Welcome. And, you know, look forward to being a pageant of yours. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as the manager has indicated, all of the approvals have come in from the various departments that were asked to provide professional recommendation. So with all that being said, does anyone want to make a motion to grant this request?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'll sign the paperwork, and Bev will work to get that back to you.
Awesome.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Have a great night. Thanks for your time. Thank you. So moving on to our next appointment is with Brett Sawin, who is our Recreation Director, regarding an update on our Recreation Department programs and services. Good evening. Thank you for your patience and understanding in giving that business owner some additional time.
Absolutely. No, thank you for having me. It feels like just yesterday I was here back in April, and now I'm three and a half months in just about as director. And, you know, happy to be here tonight and catch you guys up on everything recreation. I think we had a great fall. A lot of our programs were well-attended, if not at full capacity. Just to mention a few, Kinder Basketball, 35-plus basketball, which was back to full capacity, which was nice, first time since pre-pandemic. Middle School Running Program, we had 52 kids, which was a new high for us, which is awesome to see that many kids excited about running. Our archery class, which always does well, was full again. Some trips to highlight, we did a overnight trip to the Finger Lakes, which we had 50 people, and the only complaint was the weather. So overall, I'd say that was pretty good. Some of the day trips, we had our first day trip back to New York City in October, which was well-attended. We had over 40 people on that trip, which was great to get back. And, you know, our trip leader, who's done all those trips for us, was a little hesitant to see how it would go in the city after the pandemic. But she said it was great, and we'll look to continue doing that again in 2023. We had two day trips for like lunch and a show. So a country Christmas day trip out to Holyoke, Mass. to the Log Cabin, which was a great take. Really cool place, if you haven't been there. Really nice venue. They do a lot of weddings and then a lot of day shows. And then we did Christmas with Paul Anka back in December at the Danversport Yacht Club, which was a lot of fun. I learned a lot of songs that I did not know or knew that Paul Anka sang, but it was a great time. We had the Horribles Parade in October. We had 645 kids show up, and I had planned for 650. And I was very nervous at the end of this. Well, we planned for over 700 next year for sure. It was a great day for weather, you know, the day before Halloween this year, and there were some other local events that afternoon. So we had a great turnout. It was a great day. And now, you know, going forward into the winter, rec basketball is underway. We've got 155 first and second graders at junior basketball over at the Shawshin, which is just a lot of fun seeing the young kids. The whole gym goes nuts whenever anybody scores. It's so much fun being in that one. And then rec basketball at the North Middle School and West Intermediate, and we've got about 240 kids across the three gyms there on Saturday. So numbers are back to pre-pandemic, which is great. Last year was obviously a little bit lower. I think some people were a little hesitant, but we're back up and running, which is great to see. And 2023 programs and day trips are doing really, really well. A lot of things are full or getting close to full. And then the one thing that we're struggling a little bit on is the overnight trips. So we've got one to Tucson in April, and then another one to Idaho in August. Numbers are a little bit low. I'm pretty confident that the Tucson trip is going to run. Spoke to the vendor today, and he's going to take a look at it. And we're a little bit under the minimum, but he's pretty confident that we're going to make it work for that one, which is great. But, you know, love to get the word out there. Maybe the weather has been a little too nice around here for people to think about going to Arizona this winter, but should be a great trip in just a couple months. So if anybody's interested, talking to the public as well, you know, please come and see us, give us a call. We're still taking people. And then the Idaho trip, as I mentioned, in August. Different location for us. We've never been out to Idaho before. Got a lot of cool stuff planned for that trip. It's a little bit more adventurous, three different hotels within a week. There's a riverboat cruise at one point down the Snake River. So a lot of fun out in Idaho, not just potatoes, which I got a lot of comments about that when the trip was released. And then, as you know, we've opened up lifeguard applications. I've already gotten two, which is great for, you know, early January. I'm really excited about that. I know two doesn't sound like a lot, but it's great to see kids starting to think about the summer and, you know, where they want to work. I've reached out to Shawshin Tech because we're looking to do a lifeguard certification class, and Jay Tiltzley has been very helpful over there. And we're trying to put something together possibly for April vacation. And then this year, in talking to the town manager, we've agreed that we're going to cover the certification cost for anybody that takes the class with us and then works for us over the summer. So hoping that's just another, you know, bonus for kids that want to get certified and be a lifeguard, because it is a little bit expensive to get certified. So, you know, doing everything we can to try to get kids in there. I think it's a great summer job. You get to be outside, be in the sun. So, you know, anyone out there that's interested, please give us a call and learn more about it. And then our staff, we are a younger staff, you know, myself, I'm just four years into the department, but I think we're working really well together. Derek Stemler, our new program coordinator, has been doing a great job taking over my old position. And then Marilyn Manos, who's our senior clerk, is doing an amazing job, especially at the newsletters. We're working hard right now at our spring newsletter. It'll be out in just about a month, early February. And that'll cover the rest of spring and all of our summer programs, which we're already getting calls about Playground and Tiny Tots. Everyone's really excited about that. So we're excited. You know, we're gearing up for the busy time of the year for us, which is great. So, yeah, I just want to open it up to you guys. Any questions?
Well, first, I'd like to just thank you very much for being here tonight. I will say that in all the years that I've been around, recreation always is the funnest place to go and visit. Even my dog, when I came in, he had a visit on Fridays, which I know I shouldn't be announcing, but I do sometimes bring him in, call it pet therapy or whatever you want. He seems to make a beeline for the Recreation Department, so even he knows where it's at.
Yep, we love seeing him.
So, but in a more serious note, you have embraced the position. I'm very pleased to see a shining example of someone being promoted from within, which is you. And I've been into your department and met some of the newer people in your department, and everyone has been very friendly, willing and capable of helping anyone that's come in, even when I'm in there for a visit. So that's a credit to them. It's a credit to you. I'm excited about all the programs that you have. I'm pleased that Wilmington as a community has such a vibrant Recreation Department. I think it should be noted that not every community has a Recreation Department, and not every community has a Recreation Department that is running so well as ours is. And that's a credit to you and to the leadership staff within Town Hall, Jeff and his team, to see that that department continues to run, that it continues to fund. You produce your own revenue as well. And I just think overall, it's a bright spot for the town. So thank you very much for being here. If there's anything that we can do as a board to support you and your team, don't hesitate to speak to us directly or through the manager or both. And once again, thank you very much for being here. So I'll open it up to any board members. I'll start to my left if anyone has any comments, and I'll work my way across the table.
This is great. I'm so thrilled to hear that numbers are back up. My kids, when they were younger, participated in so many different basketball, especially the playground. I mean, you know, we waited in line at 5:00 AM to get, you know, in there. So well worth it. But no, it's wonderful to know that things are kind of getting back to normal. And I echo what the chair said. This town does such a robust recreation program for all ages. It's not just the children, of course. So thank you for all the effort. You're doing a great job. And I'm thrilled to hear you have two lifeguard applications already. I think that's wonderful. So continued, you know, best wishes and keep it up. You're doing great. Thank you.
I too am excited to hear that you're going forward with the lifeguards so early and that you do have a few. I hope you're going to be able to achieve your goal of the numbers. Wilmington's always been known for having programs for their kids. And to see how active you are with it and you're keeping these programs going is just a testament to the town and your staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brett, thanks so much for being here for the presentation. I always like talking about the summer in July's. I mean, in January, rather. So thank you for that. Sounds like you got a lot of great things going on, and we really appreciate that. We're super excited about what you've been offering and what you're going to offer. You know, me personally, my kids are excited for the introduction of sports class over at the West. They'll be doing that again. And so we're grateful for that personally. And then, you know, some of my fondest memories are out here at Playground. That was more than 30 years ago. So that's been going strong and for a long time. Sure, it will continue to go strong. But glad to hear that you're, you know, teaming up with Jay over there so that the kids can take the certification test in the warm water so early in the spring. I hope that will make a big difference. I know kids maybe didn't want to take the cert if they had to go out in the cold, so hopefully that will help. And we're grateful for him for teaming up. And it sounds like you got a lot of good stuff going on, you and your staff. So thanks so much for the update. And I know Mr. Kyra is a big Paul Anka fan, so he's excited too.
That's right. That's right. Absolutely. Going last, I echo my colleagues' comments. It sounds like you haven't skipped a beat since you took over, which is nice. You just kept keeping it going, which is great.
Yep.
I'm a product of the Recreation Department back. I was in the Beltway School, by the way, when the schools had their own summer programs, and we competed against each other with, you know, street hockey and wiffle ball and the whole bit. Each school had its own theme, its own. It was pretty cool back then, but it's good now, too. One thing that, I was a volunteer coach for basketball, believe it or not. I never played formal basketball, but it was a lot of fun. And one thing that I remember that we started was a basketball open gym for the high school kids, nine, 10, 11, 12. And we used to do that on Tuesday nights, because the kids, they said, "Mr. Kyra, we're all aging out, and we want something to do in the wintertime." And, you know, we got cut from basketball, and there's no place to go. So I thought that we'd have an open gym, and I ran that for four years. And it kept going for a little bit, but suggestion may look into that for the older kids, to give them something to do. We used to do it on a Tuesday night at the Woburn Street School. They had a blast. There was a ton of kids.
Yeah, we have open gym for adults right now, so over 18. That's on Thursday nights. And then we have the 35-plus league, but that's a good point for high school kids, because I know we used to have high school as part of the rec program, but numbers kept dwindling and going down and down. It wasn't feasible to just make teams anymore, but an open gym concept might be a much better approach to getting those kids. Yeah.
You had like 10, 15, sometimes 20 kids come in.
Yep.
They make their own teams.
Right. Just pick up. Yeah.
Pick up. As long as you had an adult there to watch them.
Yep.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I do think that's a great suggestion, by the way.
Yeah.
My nephew, he's 18, but he's back from college right now. And the other night, he and his friends, they drove to Lowell, each put in like $10 to $20 apiece so they could rent a court to play basketball in a private club.
Yeah.
To play. So if it was, and they're all Wilmington kids that were home. So maybe if it's timed, even like an offering when college kids are home.
Yeah.
Even if you did it during that 30-day period, like during that Christmas break, I'm just, you know, offering another angle.
College kids can come to open gym on Thursday nights.
Okay.
It's over 18, so let them know.
So even if they don't sign up, like if they can only fit within that window, it's not a problem?
It's all dropping.
It's all dropping?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's $5 per week.
Okay.
And you just bring cash, and we have a supervisor there to collect.
Okay. That's interesting. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's really a good point.
What we did, I think it was like $25 registration fee.
For the whole program.
We collected it, yeah. And then when the kids come in, they have to stay in the gym.
Right.
As soon as they leave, they're not allowed back in the gym.
They're not allowed back, yeah.
And that was, that was one of the rules that we gave them something to do.
Yeah.
One more question, if I can, through you. Mr. Kyra mentioned coaches. How are you doing on the coaching end? You seem to be doing all right. I see you get emails and stuff.
We have to beg for one coach this year.
Oh, good.
Believe it or not. Usually, we have to send out the email, and we didn't have to do that for any basketball program this winter, which was awesome.
It's great.
Yeah. Parents really stepped up this year, and a lot of high school kids. We had a record number come out and volunteer for hours. I think we had 17 in total.
Yeah, that's where I was going with it. That's where I was going with it, because I think that's a great resume builder for a high school kid, to help out with the youth, whether it's soccer or, you know, basketball.
Yeah.
So that's where I was going to go. So thank you.
We had so many parents step up this year. I believe we only have three teams coached by high school kids by themselves. We paired up a lot of kids with parents this year just because we had so many. But it's great to see the kids come out. And, you know, a lot of them are basketball players themselves, because it's Saturday mornings, so they're available after they typically play on a Friday night. And the little kids look up to them. They're their idols. And they go watch them on Friday night, and then they're the ones in the gym either coaching or roughing, which is great. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
So not to pull it to a different direction, but there's been so much historical chat about pickleball. So if you can just give us a pickleball update.
Sure.
And also, too, I got a pickleball racket for Christmas, which I don't know how that happened, because I didn't ask for it, but it did come. So it's.
You'll have to take a class with us.
Yeah. So if you can talk about that.
Sure.
Because it's such a big topic.
Yeah, pickleball ran, you know, we had outdoor sessions into November, and then we had one indoor session before the holiday break, and our next one started tonight, the pickleball one-on-one class over at the Woburn Street. So that's for beginners. And we have the intermediate group on Thursday nights. It's our most popular program. When the newsletter goes out, those classes are full two to three hours later.
Wow.
Word gets out, they all text one another to make sure they all sign up for their same class, especially the Thursday night group. And we cannot offer enough pickleball.
Good to know.
If we had a gym that I could just have five nights a week, we would make it happen, and it would probably be full. And we'll look to get back outside probably late March. You know, it's been a mild winter so far. Hopefully, that continues and we'll get the nets back up and they'll be very happy about that, so.
It's interesting how it's, um, I say this respectfully, it seems like it's, it's trending in all age groups. It's not just considered to be a certain age factor that a certain age group participates. It seems like it's hitting every age bracket now.
It's, I've, um, when I came here, I hadn't seen it, I learned it in high school and I never saw it again until I started working here in Wilmington. I remember the day I interviewed Karen, she pointed it out that we had courts here that, which were pretty new at the time. And I hadn't seen it in about fourteen years. And it's great. I mean, um, it's great that the new senior center is gonna have courts as well, cause there's definitely demand for it. Um, you know, any spring, summer, fall night out there, the courts are full. It's pretty impressive and, um...
Well, I walked behind here and I talked to a group that was playing and none of them were from Wilmington. They drove here to use it, cause they want pickleball courts, but they don't have it in their community. And I'm part of a league, a bowling league in Amesbury, and all the people up there play pickleball and they, they are in dire, you know, need to try and find places to have courts, cause they don't have them in their respective community. So, people are traveling here to play.
Right. And we have some of the nicest around in any surrounding community, which is great.
Yes.
Since we're on the topic, we did get some feedback, which you're well aware of, about the courts, uh, closing at a particular time. Do you want to speak to that?
Um, yeah, had conversations with the town manager and director of DPW and, um, you know, unfortunately, it does get cold out and we have to think about the equipment as well as the safety of the courts. We don't want anyone out there slipping or falling, um, potentially getting injured. So, believe me, I know they'd like to keep them up twelve months a year. We left them up as long as possible. I know all the tennis nets came down first around town. We kept the pickleball nets a little bit later, I believe, a week and a half. And, um, you know, at, at some point, you do have to take them down and think about safety and as well as preserving the equipment for the courts themselves, so. I hear it as well. I got, I got those emails, if not more. So, I understand they're a little bit frustrated, but, um, you gotta think of safety as well of everybody.
In another point, it was over the summer, I got some feedback from somebody about, uh, a person from out of town. Was, was happy to give me their feedback, which is fine. But about screens with the sun, has been any suggestion of that? Is that something that we should budget for the Wilmington residents' use?
So, the, the pickleball group actually fundraised and they put up screens.
Okay.
Um, not so much the sun was their comment, it was more, it's the side that faces the playground. They said they were losing the ball in contrast to the playground itself. So, they fundraised with, um, the rec commission's approval and they installed their nets with also the approval of DPW and they've loved it. So, um, it's on both, like, the widths of the court, um, so we can still see into it. Police can still see into it. So, you know, you don't have kids going in there and hiding, um, and they've loved it. So, we're, we're also working on some basic rules, um, just to kinda keep the peace out there with as popular as they are. Couple of our supervisors, along with some of the, the pickleball group, has been putting them together. They're working on finalizing them and then I'll be presenting them to the rec commission for final approval. So, we'll probably have a sign up when the courts reopen in the spring with, just some basic rules, especially when they're full and how to keep people rotating out there.
And my final thought is, I too, Judy, have, uh, work with two people, one from Barica, one from North Reading, and they're out there almost every night, so, uh, they enjoy it very much.
A lot of fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No idea what to do with it. It's still in the wrapper, but we'll figure that out, so, yeah.
Stuff, bring it to the office.
Yeah. Well, if there's, uh, nothing else, we want to just offer you a sincere thank you again for being here and, um, you know, we wish you well and we'll be seeing you again soon.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Great.
Have a great night.
Thank you so much. Okay, so moving on to communications, I'll turn it over to the manager, please.
Uh, yes, the first item under communication, uh, involves a, uh, a meeting that took place a couple of weeks ago here with, uh, representatives from, uh, the Wilmington-Woburn Intermodal, well, it was intermodal, now it's referred to as industrial, uh, group. It was formerly the Wilmington-Woburn Intermodal. This is with regard to the property on, uh, fifty-one Eames Street, the, um, Olin property. Received a, uh, call from, uh, Mike Kyra, uh, who is one of the folks that is working with this group, uh, was looking to provide an update on their efforts. So, we met on the twenty-eighth of December. The group indicated that the expectation is that they will be purchasing the property at some point here during two thousand twenty-three. One of the things they're, uh, waiting for at this point is the, uh, conclusion of the consent agreement. As you may recall, EPA is engaged with Olin and the other, uh, principal parties, uh, to reach an agreement on, uh, the cost associated with remediation, uh, of the site. We were told that once that consent agreement, uh, is issued and released, they will review that and then they expect to move forward with the purchase of the property. They indicated they've, um, had some preliminary discussions with EPA and, uh, the proposal constitutes really two phases of development of a warehouse. The first phase, uh, being approximately hundred and ninety-five thousand square feet. Uh, this area would be located on the Eames Street side of the property. Uh, and then a second phase, uh, a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. Their expectation, based upon conversations with EPA, is that may have to, uh, be deferred for a period of time pending work, uh, that EPA and, and Olin will be doing in terms of both data collection and essentially establishing, uh, the monitoring areas and so on. Next, under communication, uh, is, um, a memo that I prepared for the board with regard to, uh, consideration of the Trey Hand School as an option for, uh, the Sintrom solution, if you will, for the Wildwood staff and students. So, I received an email, uh, a couple of weeks ago from a resident of Wilmington, uh, asking if we had considered, uh, looking at the Trey Hand School. That school, uh, was just recently, uh, closed. Those students, uh, are now at a new school over on Pleasant Street in Tewksbury. We did, uh, follow up with, um, I talked to the town manager in Tewksbury and, uh, also his facilities person. Separately, George Hooper, our building superintendent, uh, met with his counterpart and took a tour of the building, uh, as did the school superintendent and the, uh, assistant superintendent. The building, uh, was built in nineteen fifty-two and there were some additions put on, uh, after that. There are a number of issues, uh, that would need to be addressed there, uh, including, uh, the two boilers. One is completely out of commission. The other one, they were able to just kinda get it across the finish line before they left the building. Uh, there's also, uh, an issue associated with a sewer line that needs to be addressed. So, the, the building in, in many respects, and, and I have not had an opportunity to tour it myself, uh, but in talking to George Hooper, um, there, there are some similarities to the Wildwood School. Certainly wanted to at least, um, investigate, uh, this option. Quite honestly, at this point, I, I don't believe it's going to be, uh, uh, you know, a, a candidate for, um, for use by Wilmington. Clearly, any improvements that we would need to make to the building would be on the town's dime. Certainly, we appreciate, uh, Tewksbury and, um, Richard Montori, the town manager's willingness to, uh, give us the opportunity to take a look at the building. But, um, my expectation is that, uh, when the next meeting is held with the Wildwood Building Committee, that this will be discussed and, uh, I, I think the, um, I don't want to speak for Glenn Brand and Paul Roggero and George, but I, I think it's fair to say we collectively agree that this is, um, not the best option to consider. Next is a memo, uh, from me, uh, to the board with regard to the Town Managers Act. At the time of the writing, uh, the Town Managers Act was in third reading. It has since, uh, been approved, was signed, as I understand it, on the last day of Governor Baker's term. And, uh, through Senator Feingold's office, uh, we were provided with a copy of the legislation as approved. I, I want to certainly give thanks to our full legislative delegation. This was initiated, uh, by Senator Tar at the time, certainly Representative Robertson and, and Senator Feingold all helped in, uh, getting this through the, um, the legislature. Uh, I'm told in many cases, it can take more than one legislative session to get these kind of, um, uh, acts through. So, kudos to them for shepherding this through in such a timely manner. Uh, next is a memo, uh, from me to the board addressing some, uh, questions, uh, that were raised at the December twelfth, uh, Board of Selectment meeting. You'll recall, it was a question about whether the town school admin building would be connected to town sewer. In fact, it will be connected to town sewer. Uh, in speaking with George Hooper, he reminded me that we do have a sewer line that was, uh, that actually extends down to Adams Street and takes a, a right ultimately to get over to the high school. It was done as part of that project, so the sewer line would be connected there. Separately, there was a question asked about, uh, ongoing monitoring of, uh, groundwater behind the, uh, Frank Kelly Turf Field. Uh, in follow-up discussions with, uh, Jamie McGoldy, uh, he noted that, uh, the town is, has fully complied with the DEP's superseding order. Uh, and in fact, due to the effectiveness of the town's efforts in, in addressing the issues there, the monitoring, which had initially been required on a quarterly basis, uh, DEP has reduced that sampling requirement to annuals, so we are, uh, good to go with that. Uh, have a memo to the board with regard to the North Wilmington, uh, train, uh, station. Uh, there was a notice of intent, uh, that was filed with the Conservation Commission for the construction of the new, uh, train platform in North Wilmington. You'll recall, this has been a longstanding issue. Again, our legislative delegation has been involved. Certainly, members of the board here have been very, um, uh, insistent in, uh, in seeing that this, uh, be put forward. Uh, and it appears that it will be coming to fruition. There was a public hearing, uh, before the Conservation Commission on January fourth, uh, was the first salvo, so to speak. So, representatives from Keolis and the MBTA, uh, their engineers, uh, met with, uh, Conservation Commission, uh, and, uh, they're working through that process. Now, the next, the meeting, the public hearing was continued, uh, to their February first meeting. Uh, there were some revisions to the plan that were, are in the process of being made. Valerie Gingrich and, um, uh, Cameron Lynch have been, uh, involved in discussions with them as well, and, uh, so we expect that to, to move forward. Uh, the next piece of correspondence, again, is simply the, uh, the order, uh, or the submission, the application notice of intent that was provided by, uh, the engineering firm that's working with, uh, the MBTA. And this is just the full filing that was originally submitted. Uh, next, under, uh, communications, uh, we have a, uh, memo from me to the board regarding the update on the town school admin, uh, building. We had our first meeting since the special town meeting. Had this meeting on the fourth of January. Uh, our owner's project manager and our architect were there to provide, uh, a status. The board was provided with a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that, uh, Phil O'Brien provided. One of the things he indicated is we are really in the transition phase now from schematic design to final design. Uh, so one of the things that he will be doing is, uh, making a point of meeting with department personnel, uh, both on the school side and the town side to, uh, review with them the space, uh, arrangements that have been incorporated into the design, just making sure that, uh, what they, uh, see is, um, what they're expecting. Uh, this similar process took place earlier in the process, but this is kind of a final check, if you will. Uh, and then will be, um, soon to be moving into the final design phase. Uh, also, under, uh, communications is a memo from me to the board with regard to a, uh, donation of five thousand dollars from the Lowell Five Bank. Uh, I believe this is either the third or fourth year that, um, the Lowell Five has made a donation of five thousand dollars, uh, specifically for, uh, public safety purposes. Uh, it, it came to us through Penny Dudley, our treasurer collector. Uh, when I became aware of it, I asked the two chiefs to, uh, provide a recommendation on, uh, the most appropriate use of the funds. And these funds are going to be used for, uh, supporting an effort to, uh, create a, an active shooter drill, uh, which will involve police fire dispatch and certain departments. Hopefully, we never have an occasion to have to call upon that kind of a skill set, but it's certainly, in this day and age, important that we, um, engage in that kind of training. And so, that's the, uh, that is how these funds will be used. But again, we want to really thank the Lowell Five for being such generous corporate citizens. Uh, have a memo here from the assistant town manager and HR director, Susan Inman, uh, with regard to a request, uh, from WCTV. Uh, this is a request, uh, that the board, uh, issue a letter to Verizon Cable. You'll recall, just recently, the board, uh, authorized, uh, the new license. One of the provisions in that license allows for, uh, WCTV to request a high-definition channel. Uh, the request has to come from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and then, uh, WCTV has, uh, two hundred and seventy days, uh, to provide the channel. Uh, this is certainly will be a, a benefit to subscribers of Verizon who also, uh, have access to WCTV and, and certainly, um, both Susan and I would recommend the board authorize this request. Uh, have a memorandum from Jamie McGoldy and, uh, others, uh, involved in the, uh, ARPA funding program, specifically Paula Looney, Valerie Gingrich, Shelley Newhouse and Brian Perry. Uh, you'll recall, uh, the town was authorized a little over seven million dollars, seven million, seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars for, uh, purposes associated with, uh, categories ranging from public works improvements to, uh, economic, uh, development efforts. What I've been, uh, asking the group to do is provide the board with quarterly updates. Uh, so specifically, uh, you'll note that the amounts here that are charted out, five point five million is still set aside for a water, uh, water main that will run, uh, along Lowell Street, essentially from, uh, just about the ninety-three overpass down to Lowell Street. Uh, and that is in the design, uh, stage at this point. Twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eight dollars has been expended, uh, on design services to this point. Uh, also, we have, uh, uh, funding in the amount of, uh, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and six thousand dollars, which was reduced from five hundred and six thousand. Uh, was originally slated for stormwater improvements associated with catch basins. Uh, you'll recall that, uh, there was funding, uh, initially reduced from that to, uh, offset some of the costs associated with the improvements at, at, in North Wilmington. Uh, we're also, uh, looking to use, uh, further reduce that or redirect those funds. And this was authorized, uh, at the December twelfth meeting. Three hundred thousand dollars to pay for easements associated with the, uh, traffic improvements, uh, at the intersection of Lowell Street and, uh, Woburn Street. Uh, there is, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in, uh, which is part of the Lubbers Brook Project. Again, I had referenced that earlier, but that was, that's been redirected to supplement the work there. Forty-four thousand dollars is, uh, being used for a, uh, supply, water supply screening and lifecycle cost analysis that's being done by Kleinfelter, who's one of our water consultants, to look at the prospect of whether the town should be considering, uh, full, uh, connection to the MWRA water system. Uh, the support, uh, of personnel to conduct contact tracing, uh, this was fifty thousand dollars back when this was initially, uh, established, that was set aside for that purpose. Uh, I, I don't think we're gonna need that fifty thousand for that purpose and, and Shelley Newhouse, the health director, agrees. And, uh, one of the things that, uh, I think we'll be, uh, looking to consider, uh, going forward is perhaps redirecting these funds to, uh, pay for the services, uh, associated with, um, the designer to address the Wildwood School intermediate plans, uh, for modifications to the middle school. Three hundred thousand dollars, uh, is associated with, um, facade and streetscape improvements. Valerie Gingrich has been, uh, working, uh, will be working on this. The first piece of this, you'll recall, was the branding and marketing, which is essentially, uh, for all intents and purposes, completed. That work has been done and there'll be information, uh, that'll be going out. completed. That work has been done, and there'll be information that'll be going out to the public on that shortly. The $300,000, the expectation is that the program will be up and running this summer, and we'll be inviting businesses to apply for grants to assist with either street, with new signage, or some streetscape improvements. And then we have $100,000 that was slated for grant administration and consultation with Brian Perry. We believe that that full $100,000 will not be needed for that purpose. And again, I would expect to be coming back shortly to suggest that, in addition to the $50,000, some of those funds be redirected to pay for the cost associated with the design work, so dealing with the Wildwood School. Next is a, just a letter noting that Brad Jackson has been appointed as the newest Finance Committee member. We have a letter from Joseph Langone, President of Northeastern Development Corporation. This was sent to Valerie Gingrich, seeking approval, or that the Planning Board recommend the acceptance of Green Meadow Drive. That has been brought before the Planning Board. It's my understanding that the matter was deferred because of a quorum at their prior meeting. I think it was on the 3rd of January. It'll be brought back up in February. But ultimately, this would be presented to the Planning Board, and if they deem a recommendation to accept is appropriate, then it'll come to the Board of Selectmen. We have communication from Verizon with regard to one of the changes in their channel program. This Yahoo Finance channel is no longer being offered. And then, finally, a letter from Daniel Veerman, who is a member of the Board of Appeals. Notice, notification of interest relative to application for a special permit. You'll recall that this has happened for several years now. When the July 4th committee makes their application to the Board of Appeals, because Mr. Veerman is in a butter to the property, he submits notice to the board for consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have a board to consider, which is a request of the Board of Appeals regarding the disclosure in accordance with Chapter 268A, Section 20B, relative to an application for a special permit by the 4th of July Committee.
So on this one, again, as in prior years, I would recommend that the board vote to determine that Dan Veerman's ownership of property near the carnival site is not so substantial as to likely affect him from impartially acting on the special permit application submitted by the 4th of July Committee.
Would anyone like to make a motion to grant that request? What's been made? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Yes, next board to consider is the ratification of appointment to the Historical Commission, Karen Bloom. It would be my recommendation that the board ratify her appointment. This is for a term to expire in 2024. I've spoken to her. She seems very enthusiastic about history in general, and Wilmington's history in particular.
Make a motion or grant the request?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is the executing of a, an agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the Wilmington Police Supervisors. This is a one-year agreement. It would be for the period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. The only change to the agreement is, other than dates, is the COLA would be 3%.
Would anyone like to make a motion to?
Motion.
Motion's been made. Second discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And I will have the contracts for the board to sign after the meeting. The last item under Board to Consider is issuing the request to Verizon for HD channel for the Wilmington community access. This would be authorizing the chair to sign a letter to that effect.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Good evening. Obviously, share your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Michael McCoy, 11 Treasury Hill Road. I live here in town. I'm the chairman of the Selectmen. I'm the town manager, Beverly, and the new assistant town manager, Holly.
The reason why I rise, if I could, from what I understand, the Town of Wilmington is looking to purchase two to three acres of property around Andover Street to Ballaville Street in that area. You've gone on social media, Robert Hayes', The Apple, The Patch, The Town Cry, and that's what I understand that's out there. That's, do you have a say?
Right.
If I can make a comment, then I'd just like to ask the town manager a question. About three years ago, I'm still serving on this Board of Selectmen, three years, a month ago, Charlie Benevento reached out to me. He said, "I'd like to meet with you at my pit. I would like to talk to you. I'd like to show you around." So he took me for a ride around his pickup truck. He says the Town of Wilmington has about 20 acres, somewhere like maybe landlocked property in that area. He says, "Mike, I know the Town of Wilmington is looking to have a substation here in the Town of, in the North Wilmington area." So he said, "I would like to give the town two to three acres, and it'd be right on the corner where the Highway Department is." You know that home? That's, it's all crushed up, and there's trees all over the place. He says, "But, I've presented it to Jeff. I haven't heard from Jeff. I called Jeff. I don't hear anything. Do you think you could talk to Jeff on my behalf?" So I did. I went to the man, and through you, Madam Chair, what I did was, I reached out to Jeff, being a member of the Board of Selectmen, and said, "I know we're dying for a substation here in North Wilmington. Charlie Benevento has brought this forward. He said, he hasn't heard from you yet. Could you please at least contact Charlie Benevento and talk to him?" And I know the manager. He's pulled through many constituent meetings that I've done. I give him credit on that. Absolutely. We might have had difference of opinion. He said I'd reach out to him. And the reason why I reach out, and I know we went to Zoom meetings, and this happened, that happened, the pandemic, I get all that. But through you, where I made that, through you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to ask the town manager, Jeff, over three years ago, did you ever reach out to Charlie Benevento, to talk to him about maybe doing a land swap so we could get, and I did say to Charlie, he goes, "I'd like to do two to three acres." I said, "Charlie, it'd be nice to get, if you're going to get 20, it'd be nice to get, you know, a lot more than three, two, three acres, maybe a few more, because the Highway Department, they want to utilize it." He says, "I'm all ears." So I just answered you, Jeff.
Yes.
"What is your intention? Have you ever talked to Charlie Benevento about that?"
Yes. Yeah, I have, and there were conversations, it was pre-pandemic. There were two particular meetings that I distinctly recall with Mr. Benevento and others. There haven't been conversations, I have not had personal conversations with him since then, although others have. I don't really want to get into the particulars on it, but I will say that I did have conversations previously, and there are conversations on, that are continuing.
Let me just ask you this. So you did talk to him. Never heard anything about that. Obviously, I haven't served on the board until, what, June, I believe. Have you had conversations with Charlie Benevento since then, or maybe recently, or the last, from today, from, until I brought it up to you, other than me being on the Board of Selectmen?
So again, I, I have not had conversations with him recently here, within the last couple of years. There have been conversations with, with representatives of Benevento more recently. You know, I hesitate to get into the particulars, but I can tell you that there are conversations going on with representatives from Benevento.
Relative to the property that's out on Andover Street?
Yes.
Because he owns, from that corner, from the Highway Department, all the way down Route 125. He owns that whole thing. And so you are talking to them?
Yes.
All right. That's good to hear that. I just want to make this comment. We always talk about North Wilmington, how we want to talk about putting a fire substation. We've been talking about it for years, and more so the last few years. And what really bothers me is the fact that, and it sounds like to me, and I come from the school called common sense, we need a fire substation in North Wilmington. We know that. We've heard all about it. But it just seems, and I have to say this respectfully, and I say it nicely, it seems like we put public safety on the back burner over the last few years, where we should have been more proactive in trying to work a deal with Charlie Benevento. And we haven't done that. And the only thing I can conclude is that, hey, we went forward with that town hall. In my opinion, we should have went forward with a fire substation first, because we need a fire substation in North Wilmington. And we put lives at risk every single day. You know, and I will admit, I'm in Market Basket two, three times a week, got nothing else better to do, but I go in there, I like talking to folks, and I do see the Fire Department. And they've said to me, when we go out to North Wilmington, and I've talked to them, it takes us so long a time to get out there. Obviously, North Wilmington is an outskirts of this area, and in North Wilmington, it's being highly developed, and I get that. And I'm not trying to be confrontational, but it sounds like to me, if we're going to work out a deal with Charlie Benevento, I think you could have worked that deal out three years ago. We should have went forward with the fire substation. But, hey, what's done is done, and I'll say it again. It looks like we put public safety on the back burner for that town hall. We should have put the public safety first before the town hall. But it's got voted. That's it. You know, I don't know what else to say, but that bothers me, that we put that public safety on the back burner. That's exactly what we did. And the good folks here in North Wilmington, not only in North Wilmington, there's other areas not in North Wilmington that, I'm sure the fire substation would, is probably closer than, than the, than the Fire Department down at Wilmington Center.
Your comments have been noted, for sure. And I understand, you know, that you have your opinions on that. And, and the fire substation has been talked about for a very long time. And in general, you know, it should, it should be done. And timeline-wise, you know, it certainly should be done soon. So, you know, we can't rewrite history, but we can, we're making it a priority.
And I appreciate that, but it would get under my skin a little bit, serving up there, knowing that, and I'll say it again, we put public safety on the back burner in order to get the town hall ahead of everything else. That's, you know...
Well, let me, let me say, first of all, you know, we're not putting public safety on the back burner, because the fact of the matter is that there are tremendous amount of resources that are going into public safety every year in the budget, whether it's new fire apparatus, new police apparatus, funding their, their contracts. So, you know, I respectfully disagree with the premise that public safety is on the back burner. We hired eight new firefighters through a SAFER grant. That certainly doesn't strike me as putting public safety on the back burners. We're in the process of having, spending something in the order of $450,000 on safety signals in front of the main station. So I get your point that, that the North Wilmington station should have been done years ago. Perhaps it should have been 20 years ago, 10 years ago. I understand that we need to get that done, but, but there are resources going into public safety every year, dispatch included, because they're part of public safety. So I, I don't agree that public safety is a back burner issue.
All right. And I understand. I'll just sum up real quick. I get that. I served on this board for 30 years, and I've always supported, like many you good folks, public safety. We, we always done that. Whatever the Police Department or the Fire Department wanted, we gave. The only point I'm making is that we could have did this three years ago, and I would hope to think that if we see, we're going to deal with Charlie Benevento now, right? I mean, you can only look at it from common sense, that this should have been done three years ago, if that's what, if that's what's happening. Because I understand you put more firefighters, and you're not trying to put that in the back burner, but the geographic location and the facility itself, in North Wilmington, if they put it in that area, would save lives. And I don't know how the response time is from the central station in North Wilmington. We know it's a hell of a lot longer to get there than other skirts, other areas in the Town of Wilmington. I just said my piece. I brought that to the board, and I'll agree to disagree, but that bothers me that we didn't do something three years ago, when we should have. That's all, you know, and I was hoping that we did. It didn't happen. And if you, we're going to deal with Charlie Benevento now, that only proves my point, you know. So, all right. I appreciate it, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, any announcements? I'll start to my right. Anyone?
I...
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's too bad he left, because I would have asked him what he did for 32 years on the board, on Selectmen, you know, when he considers us to be backburnered on public safety, which is totally a gross comment, as far as I'm concerned, and way out of line. I mean, back at you, 32 years on the Board of Selectmen, and I don't see a substation in North Wilmington that I can certainly say that he backburnered it. But I can also say to this board that we have not backburnered anything. And to Mr. Bendel's credit, he's the one who's championed a substation in North Wilmington. So I just, they were just out-of-line comments that he made, and he walked off. So I wish I had an opportunity to say to, to his face.
I'll just continue on this side, and then I'll bring it over. Yes.
Thanks so much. Just since it was mentioned, I appreciate that, Mr. Kyrie. But it's, you know, it's certainly been a priority of mine in my short seven years on the board, and I, but I'm confident in saying that I think it's a high priority of everybody up here that I've ever served with. And so, you know, certainly, I think if you, if you, if you listen to what the manager said, it's frustrating sometimes to serve up here, and you, and you can't broadcast everything, every conversation that you have, every meeting that you have. But these meetings and conversations are ongoing. And I think he handled the question very well, without, you know, saying that, you know, without unveiling too much information and without putting us at a disadvantage. So I appreciate that, Mr. Hall. But to your point, Mr. Kyrie, you've been here as long as I have, short seven years. It's been a priority as well. It's a priority for us, and I do not believe it's on the back burner.
Thank you for that. I would just add, I mean, obviously, someone comes in, they give their comments, they give their opinion. Jeff did, in my opinion, do a great job in terms of responding to it. People are going to have their opinions. I certainly don't want to get confrontational, but the fact of the matter is, is that every single year, this community does absolutely support, you know, capital improvements in terms of fire and police. You know, it is definitely a community comment that, you know, people want to see a fire substation. We've put in mutual aid agreements. We, when we had the work that was being done from a construction standpoint, we were able to get the temporary fire substation there. I think that accentuated, with a dry run, if you will, the power and benefit of having a fire substation there. I would also say that, you know, it was not that long ago that we had a major staffing issue on the Fire Department. We didn't have enough personnel to even cover the shifts that we needed. We were paying overtime quite excessively, and we had a very young department. We had a lot of retirements. We had a young chief at the time. And, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a concern even from a staffing standpoint, at one point, we were down six to eight people at one point.
Right.
So expanding at that time wouldn't really have been possible. But neither here nor there, you know, there definitely is a need. I think that the town, you know, is demonstrating through advertising for land. I know there's been a lot of conversation that can't be publicly stated, that the town has been working on it. Some of these things do take more time than people would like to see to come to fruition. And then I would also just say that, you know, the Warren articles that went forward, whether it was for a town hall, a school admin, or to do a senior center, they were all voted by the townspeople to see those initiatives go forward. The residents voted those things in. It wasn't just this board. We may have sponsored a Warren article to go forward, but it still went to the resident body. In my opinion, I believe that the condition of the school admin building and their situation, in my opinion, put this on the front burner. And I think with the wisdom of all the professionals that were hired, whether even internal or external, that it wouldn't have made sense to build a standalone school admin building without coupling it with the town hall, because you don't want to... without coupling it with the town hall, because you don't want to be spending the expense to build two very large buildings. So I believe, in my opinion, that the school admin status put the town hall into a higher priority, in addition to the condition of this building, which was very well documented, not to negate that, but, you know, the school admin piece was in real dire straits, which escalated that. And then the Wildwood project, you know, came from an MSBA invitation, and you don't get those invitations all the time. And there are many communities that try and vie for that, and they get denied, or they don't get a chance to participate. So I don't think, you know, and some of us sitting here, even up here, did not get the location that we wanted for these projects. We didn't get everything that we wanted, even as sitting board members. But we're still supporting these initiatives because we feel that, and some of us are not supporting these initiatives, which is fine, because we're supporting, you know, the progress for the town. So those are my comments, and I'll just turn it over to my left.
I find that there's more and more communication regarding a fire station. It's becoming more prevalent now, especially with the increase in construction up in North Wilmington. I've, I believe I've seen more and more conversations with the town manager and all my, the members here, that let's get it done. Whether it was done at the last town meeting or not, I believe everyone is in the same frame of mind that we have to get it done. Yes, it is a life issue, but I see now how everyone on the board is, has always supported it, but now it's becoming more visible, it's becoming more vocal, it's more of, now let's stop talking about it, let's get it done. We know we need land, whether it's through Charlie or in another vein, venue. I see this progressing at a rapid space, at rapid pace at this time. And I know, and I commend Greg. When I first came on the board, that was one of the main things that he talked about was getting it done and not talking about it anymore. And I believe that's what's happening now. Is it at the pace that the residents want? More than likely not. But it is getting done now, and I believe the town is making, putting its best foot forward to get it done by searching for the land so we can get it built.
Yeah, and I just want to say, you know, I've been on this board just shy of two years now, and since day one, that has been initiative as long as I've been on this board. Greg has been, you know, heading it up, but we have all been very involved. There's conversations that have gone on, obviously, that we can't speak of here in a public forum. But as a member of this board and as a resident of North Wilmington, who knows the delay and the fear and the scariness just actually two weeks ago of how much longer it can take for an ambulance and a fire truck to get there, I've wanted this long before I even, you know, sat on this board. So I do, with full respect, Mr. McCoy, do have to throw it back to you that you sat on this board for 30 years. Why wasn't it done in your tenure? And I mean that respectfully. I'm echoing what I'm saying.
I came in here and spoke.
This is civil.
Nobody had anything else to say, so I departed. But I did get a phone call. Mr. Kyra said, well, what did I do for 32 years? Now you are coming in.
I had the same thought, I just want you to know with respect. I don't need to know.
I took care, no, because that question was asked, Mr. Kyra. Let me tell you what I did for 33 years.
Three years serving on the planning board, then I ran for the board of selectmen, held that seat for 30 years. So I must have been doing something right. And I'll tell you, I took care of constituents' need. I'm a people person. When somebody had a problem, I'd go see them at their home. Let me tell you what I tried to do. I appointed town managers, I reappointed your brother, town council, I supported the public safety building when we needed it. I supported at the time the middle school, the high school. I did things. I went to people's home when they had a problem, somebody had a problem, you know, whether the mailbox get trampled down in the storm or something else, I'm there, and I brought things. So I've done a good job here in the town. I'll tell you what else I tried to do, and it would have been wonderful if the board of selectmen, when the board of selectmen do an article, they presented something at the town meeting, it usually goes through, okay? I tried us to buy the farm, was a board of selectman article. Gentlemen, one of the members decided not to do it, fine. I went out and got the signatures as an independent, as a citizen-driven petition. That's what I'd done. I went out to get signatures. I tried to do this, and I'll tell you what, wouldn't it been nice if it was a board of selectman article, and we took that property, they get tax, you know, breaks for several years on certain parcels? Wouldn't it been really kind of nice to have bought that property? And I didn't bring that up. You brought me up to speak. I believe you were talking about 333, is that Andover Street? Is that the Sharapah Farm?
It is.
All right, so you're in executive session talking about that, okay? But wouldn't it been really nice for us to buy it, even by eminent domain? And we, the good Catholic church, St. Dorothy's Church, I supported buying it. Yentiles Farm, supported buying the property from the bank. And your brother did a great job, $1.1 million, that's what it took. And I'll say one thing, when we put the articles together, and I don't think you guys were on the board at the time, and I apologize if you were, Madam Chair, I can't recall the year, but I don't think anybody was. When we took the St. Dorothy's property, right, we worked out a deal. You have to put by eminent domain to protect yourself legally. We did the same thing at the property where Yentiles Farm is. And Judy O'Connell did a fantastic job putting that together. But you got to put those words in. Wouldn't it been nice, I don't know what you're talking about, I'm not there, I don't have any intentions to be there. But wouldn't it been nice if we grabbed it back then on what we would have paid, a lot less? And that article that I put, it also presented a third party, you know, assessor to say what it's worth. I'm getting a little mouth dry here, and I was just leaving. Everything was great. Get a phone call, you better get back in there. He's saying you did nothing for 32 years. And with all due respect to you, Mrs. Marsoli.
I never said you didn't do anything. I was talking about, I was talking about the fire substation. I know you did a lot of things.
I'm glad to hear that.
I do. And that was, I just want you to know, that was my fault as well. It wasn't me echoing Kevin, and that's what I mean. I meant with due respect.
Let me just sum it up. You know, I was really hoping that no one had nothing to say. I was going to go home, play with my son Chris, but, you know, I didn't sit here. If I sat here, then maybe nothing would have been said, maybe I could have a chance to refute that, you know? But I worked hard, Kevin. And when you run for selectman, to get elected, it takes a lot of work, and you know that, everybody knows that. I did it for 30 years, okay? So I did something right.
Let me just say this, Mike. What I said was, is that your comment about saying to each one of us that we've backburnered public safety was a gross comment, because we haven't backburnered public safety. And I brought up the fact that you were sitting on this board for 30 years, and there had not been a substation under your 30-year reign as a member of the board of selectmen. So I take offense to you saying that I am backburnering public safety to the residents of this community. So you can take it any way you want, but that's what I feel. I mean.
I said the town of Wilmington, Madam Chair, if I may say, I said, I'm not going to get into a debate, but I said the town of Wilmington. And I get that, okay, what you're saying? But the truth is, it was, I said what I said, not to go down that. I said what I said, I stand by what I said, but the bottom line is, right, we talked about a public safety building for a period of time. We had other priorities at the time. And I'll tell you this, Mr. Kyra, I just wanted, I had a little bit of a wish list before I decided not to run, and I did. One of them was, you know, Cook Street, you took the board, everybody did, I was serving the board, went to all EPA, campaigned away at EPA to get those residents. And wouldn't it been nice if we grabbed, that's what I've been doing, trying to do, I think I tried to do good for the town. I think we all do good for the town.
Madam Chair, Mr. McCoy, I'm not disputing all of those things that you've said and what you've done for the town and the good work that you've done. What I'm saying is that I took offense to the fact that you're saying that each one of us up here are backburnering public safety to the residents of Wilmington. And I don't believe any of us are doing that. So that's my comment to you, sir.
What I said was, and I'll say it again, I said, the way I feel, is that in the town, right, with the other town of Wilmington, the town of Wilmington, in the North Wilmington area, puts public safety on the back burner for the town hall. And now, for the past three years, we had an opportunity to probably do something, but that never happens. I wasn't serving on the board the past three years, that never happened. But now it seems like you're talking to Charlie Benevento now. Well, we could have, should have did it three years ago, maybe because Mike McCoy's name would have been attached or something.
Maybe we should have did it 29 years ago, Mike, but all I'm saying to you.
We didn't need it 29 years ago.
But all I'm saying to you is that we're not backburnering public safety to the residents of this community. And you should know that.
Said what I said.
But I know, and I don't believe. I don't understand why you said.
Kevin, let me tell you something. If you were so hard to try to put a fire substation in North Wilmington, why didn't you do that before? You supported the town hall, that was your beat.
Wait, but supporting, I'm just going to interject.
I'm not going to a debate, but you're trying to say.
No, I understand that, but one, these are two, these are separate and distinct. I think if you support a town hall, school admin, or you support a senior center, it does not mean that you don't support public safety.
Thank you.
So that, I think, I understand that we all want to see a fire substation. I understand we can talk about the history, and I don't think any one of us, including you, are backburnering public safety. So there's a philosophical difference between, I mean, I would agree that may not, I don't know what, you only know what your true intentions are, but it is offensive to think that in the absence of not having a fire substation, that we are backburnering public safety. There's so much more that goes into it. You know, from being on here, we were understaffed, we did not, we had a chief transition, we were having overtime budgets just to even put personnel in the existing public safety. If we were to put a fire substation five, six, seven years ago, we would not have had the staff to fill it. You know that. We were down, we needed an additional ladder truck, we needed to bring in additional ambulances online. So, you know, there are other extenuating circumstances. You may have had a conversation with Mr. Benevento, I have not. I can tell you that all's I can do is speak to right now, to the extent that I can, that it's a priority. I understand that you had efforts that were generated back then, and you would have liked to have seen that happen. I can respect that. But to Mr. Kyra's point, the fact that that doesn't translate to this board or the town not making public safety a priority, that's the gap right there.
Just let me finish by saying that the town manager said a moment ago, I was serving on the board when we supported all the extra firefighters back then. And you're saying the fact that we, you're saying the fact that, you know, we were having a tough time staffing with all these firefighters, didn't it make kind of sense to put a fire substation on in North Wilmington? I'm just saying this, I said what I said, all right? You know, I thought I left, everything was fine, then I get a phone call. And that's why I came in here. I mean, what I should have did, was been, I just sit there for the rest of the meeting, okay? All right? So that's why I came back, back in, Madam Chair, but.
No, and I understand, and I've given you. I mean, and I agree with you on that. I'm just saying that certainly giving you the point of personal privilege.
I appreciate that.
Because you came back in, you know, and so I'm certainly trying to be fair with that. I think, you know, I don't want to be accused of trying to stop this conversation, but I think the points have all been made, and I think we'll just kind of speak around and around about the same topic. I can understand why feelings might have been hurt by the comment, but I understand that you'd like to see a fire substation. And all's I can tell you is that moving forward, that's the vision, it has been the vision. And, you know, by putting that open letter out to residents seeking land, you know, that's a very demonstrative step that the town is invested in doing that. And there are conversations that unfortunately, based on the fact that you're not privy to the executive sessions and other conversations, we can't fully answer that for you, but those conversations are happening.
I get that. And I'll just say, I appreciate the opportunity, let me come back and speak. I stand by what I stated. Over the past three years, it just made more common sense to do a fire substation as opposed to the town, to the town hall slash admin building. We got to respect each other's ways, and I'm not going to put a question out, well, do you think a fire substation should have come before that? The answer is no. You've supported the town hall slash school administration building. All I'm saying is.
I would have supported, I would have, to take that one step further, I absolutely would have put a fire substation front and center and would have had that at the town meeting if I had a piece of land to put it on.
Right.
So that is a very distinct point.
100% right.
And so that, that would have been a warrant article for that, if there was a piece of land to put it on.
But let me just say this.
So that has to be, and I hope that they bold that and highlight it, because that would have been on there, and we would have been spending even more money.
One of the members on the FinCom said, folks, we don't have any property in North Wilmington. That's not true. We were thinking of building in Salem Street's part of North Wilmington. We were thinking about building a high school, but we chose not to do that. There's enough property absolutely out there to put a fire substation. I would love to know where else we own. But just that, Judy, Madam Chair, if I say, we were talking about that a long time, there was even talk about putting the rink out there at one time, okay? So there is property in North Wilmington, and just to let you folks know that, it's right off Salem Street, that is North Wilmington, and there's plenty of space to put a fire substation and more there. That never happened. So that's not accurate to say we have no property out there. Maybe we should put it on Salem Street and not work a deal with Mr. Benevento, you know? Or maybe we should. I think we should have done it three years ago. Madam Chair, I said it, I think we got our points, and I just thought I was leaving nicely about it, and that's why I came in, Madam Chair.
Thanks, thank you for that. Thank you. New business? Anyone?
Any more public comments?
No public comments, have concluded. Thank you.
Excuse me, just by the way, with regard to a fire substation, if you really didn't put it on the back burner, I didn't come to speak about it, but the highway department could open up a bay, and there could be a fire engine put in there immediately tomorrow, and it would prevent somebody from dying from smoke inhalation. So I didn't come to speak about this, but yeah, it's on the back burner. I agree with Mr. McCoy.
So new business?
And you should let people speak.
Public comments is concluded. Thank you. New business? Anyone? Okay, moving on to important dates.
Important dates, we have through January 13th, curbside collection of Christmas trees, the senior center building committee meets, town hall, room nine, 6:00 PM on the 11th. On January 16th is Martin Luther King Day, town officer closed. January 17th is the town hall school admin building committee, town hall auditorium, 6:00 PM. Selectmen's meeting is on January 23rd, room nine, 7:00 PM. And then on the 30th is a board of selectmen meeting, select board meeting, town hall, room nine, 7:00 PM, the town manager's budget presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Selectman Bendel to present our salute to service.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And on behalf of our board, it's my pleasure, a pleasure tonight to present tonight's salute to service to John J. Fulton Jr., who was a lifelong resident, joined the United States